On behalf of Syracuse City Council and staff, I'd like to welcome all of you out this evening to our meeting. This is the Syracuse City Council Work Session. We generally don't meet here in a work session, and later on in the meeting we'll be recessing and reconvening back in a conference room. But we have some planning issues that have a lot of interest in the community, and we thought it might be well to meet in here, to be able to have an opportunity to hear from the public particularly on two or three issues. I have asked Councilman Teague if he would lead us in an invocation or a prayer, and then Councilwoman Bingham if she'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together and discuss the affairs of this wonderful city. We ask the Lord to bless us, guide us, inspire us, and lead us to those ideas and concepts that may be considered to better our community. We are grateful again for the opportunity to serve. We're grateful for this community and for those who are here to speak with us about their concerns and feedback, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ever God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was...it's wonderful to be able to meet together. The last time I was in chambers, I was in...I was here with a bunch of young people Thursday or two ago, and we have a project within the city where we gather schoolchildren together and give them a little bit of a civic less...civics lesson. We...we meet with grade school age kids, with the junior high kids, and with the high school kids that...and the schools that they attend from our city. One of the games we play in that meeting is patterned after the old child game, "Mother May I?" And we call it "Mayor May I." And we have a...we teach them the basics of Robert's Rules of Order so that they can conduct a public hearing, and they can determine a number of issues. Our great...our favorite grade school topic is what our mascot ought to be. I think pineapple was suggested last time. I don't know how a pineapple becomes a mascot, but dragon seems to be a popular one. And so, in those sessions with children, we teach them a little bit about Robert's Rules. May I share with you a little bit about Robert's Rules because I'm going to be opening our session tonight up to public comment? Roberts...Brigadier Robert...Brigadier General Roberts was a civil engineer during the Civil War, and he was instrumental in the protection of Washington DC and the city of Philadelphia during the Civil War. After it was over, he was asked to conduct a meeting, a public meeting, in...in a town near Boston in an old church. And he was trying to conduct that meeting, and during that meeting, he realized that there ought to be some rules for the conducting of public discourse. So he began at that time to establish a set of rules for discussion in public. City Council, the city, and the city council has adopted Robert's Rules of Order for order... for the purposes of discussion. Here in a minute, I'll be opening the floor for public comment. We would ask you to come forward. In fact, if you would like to come forward and you have something you'd like to share, I'm going to ask that you come forward and you fill these chairs on the front row. And then Brittany, would you stand? Brittany is an intern in my office, and she has a non-meltable ice cube. She is going to pass that ice cube to the person who sits to the furthest...to my right over here. And then what we would ask you to do is to come up in the order that you sit, and if you come to the rostrum to speak, if you'll pass that ice cube to the next person in line so we know at what point you came forward, and we'll just move across like this, and then if there's sufficient, we'll come back. And we'll...we'll do that so that we establish some order on...on who speaks and when. We'd give you three minutes. That is a common practice in all public meetings, in the state and in the county, that a public forum, in the forum, we'd give you three minutes. We'd ask you to state your name and your place of residence for the purpose of the fact that this is a recorded meeting. This is an official meeting of the city council, and we need to give a full and accurate report, a faithful report, of who was here and who spoke in that meeting. So if...when you reach the microphone here, if you pull it closer to your lips so we can hear, state your name and place of residence. We would love to hear that. And then we'll give you three minutes at that rostrum. We will...we would ask the audience here to be aware that in...in a public meeting, emotions can get out of hand a little bit. We would ask you not to boo, or not to scream, or not to do a nude...not to clap. Let's just listen to the opinions of many residents in the city and make sure that everyone has a chance to hear. We will allow all who would an opportunity to speak. So on behalf of the city council, I now declare that we are in public comment period. If you'd like to come forward and start over on this side, let's fill this front row. Brittany, would you distribute the ice cube for me? This ice cube was made by Pierre Simon. I don't know if that's how you say that. It's French. Let's start on this end. In...in...there is a little town just on the...across the border from New Hampshire and Vermont. It's called Queechy, Vermont, and Simon Pierce has a glass-blowing factory there, and my wife and I were there three or four years...falls ago for the autumn leaves. And I picked up this ice cube and thought it would be a good thing to pass in these meetings. So if you have the ice cube, if you pass it to your right, and if you'll come forward and state your name and place of residence, we'll give you three minutes to respond. By the way, we will not be discussing anything. There'll be no discussion this evening. Tonight is an opportunity for us to hear from you. The council will not respond to any questions that you have up here. We will take notes. We will discuss those issues as we...as we meet to discuss issues. But this portion is not an open dialogue. It is to hear your...your words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is George Hosford, resident of Syracuse. And this is going to be regarding my...my comments regarding the Holt property and the proposed development of it with apartments. I support apartments in Syracuse, but not at this location. Legacy Parkway Corridor would be an ideal location for this type of development. It offers proper buffers that are designed for existing homeowners, much like apartments and condos that are west of Station Park in Farmington and Swan's Lake in Leighton. They have large, open areas that bypass parks or roads to buffer the apartments from the single-family homes. Eight-foot concrete walls sometimes have been mentioned by the developer. That's a poor residential buffer for sight and sound of apartments. It's great for amateur graffiti artists. The congestion, the apartments and businesses will have numerous vehicles, possibly more than 700 vehicles, to 1475 West and Antelope intersection. Antelope Road and 1475 West would be even more congested and dangerous if apartments are added. Children's safety would be at issue here, Antelope Road where there's a school crossing currently. This lot's not large enough to accommodate apartments properly. Access is so restricted it would adversely impact Antelope to 2000 West. The solution is townhomes with a 50-foot south-side buffer. That should allow the developer to profit and protect existing residents' quality of life. Townhomes and 50-foot south-side buffer should provide a viable compromise between a developer and Syracuse residents. Councilman Savage met with some of the homeowners, and he spoke of holding his vote until a developer moved dumpsters from the south side of his development to the east side. So that tells us the council has the ability to refuse rezoning until a developer provides two things: a 50-foot south-side buffer from the existing homes and townhomes and businesses with no apartments. Please support your residents who voted for you over the developer's financial interest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Please, I...I don't want to get where I have to call, but would you please withhold emotional response?
So I'm Jim King. I'm a resident of the Sunset Park Villas. So as a group of citizens against rezones to high use, planning items two through five on our agenda, we previously sent you emails and letters expressing numerous reasons to vote no on rezone requests. For night's city council work session, we want to make sure you had adequate time to cover your work session agenda, particularly the planning items I just mentioned. Therefore, we as a group of concerned citizens have not shown up en masse tonight. We'll only have a few citizens address the council tonight with a few of many specific concerns we have. I request your vote to decline rezon of 5.29 acres to mixed-use development at 817 West, 1700 South for the following reasons. So 1000 West and Antelope Drive No is already a high-traffic accident area. Additional 116 high-density apartments where...whose main ingress/egress is onto Antelope Drive will only increase the number of auto accidents in this area. So I have asked the Syracuse Police Department for a report and of accidents from Antelope Drive at the intersection 1000 West going east up to the Pizza Factory, another section from the intersection, Antelope Drive 1000 West going on 1000 West to about 2000 South. There were 50 accidents in the year at...in those two areas designed...defined. Twenty-nine of those were actually at the intersection of Antelope and 1000 West. Seven were at 867 West, 1700 South where McDonald's currently is. And if the plan goes through on item two, you're actually going to take that east exit of McDonald's and make them go through and join in with the apartments to get out to Antelope Drive. That's going to be more confusing. When there are accidents on 1700 South, the damage and injuries are generally substantial as the posted speed limit there is 45. Most traffic is probably going 50 to 55 with cars, trucks, semis with trailers, cement trucks, gravel hauling vehicles, buses moving along two major lane road going east and west through Davis County. If high-density apartments are approved, they will also add more cars and trucks in this area, but also add moving vehicles to the traffic mix on 1700 South. The rezon request is approved, the added traffic on Antelope Drive plus westward flow of auto traffic through an already crowded parking lot in and around Smiths. I mean, those roads that go through there now are...
Jim, I'll give you 20 more seconds.
That'll be fine. For Syracuse City's first venture into high-density housing, why put it in the middle of 1000 West and the Antelope Drive No? Is it ominous with the other properties around it? What image would we make to people in the primary bedroom community of Syracuse from the east on Antelope Drive to see five three-story apartments bordering up against an already crowded Antelope Drive? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
My name's Kathy Palmer, and I also reside at the Sunset Park Villas. I've been a real estate broker for 32 years now. I wanted to check into the apartment complexes around us because everybody talks about affordable housing, and I was shocked at the information that I found out. I just want to make a couple of points here. If you're looking for more affordable housing, apartment complexes are not the way to go. The one-car garage townhomes in Stoker Gardens that have three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and are larger than any of the three-bedroom apartments in the four I gave you a handout on rent for $1,350 to $1,400 a month. And as you can see from my handout, the apartments rent from $1,485 to $1,666 per month. There's a townhome currently listed on the market that I gave you three different loan scenarios on, that the payment on it, even if 100% financing on Utah Housing, is lower than any of these rents, no low-high rents. In fact, the rent problem is so bad that if you listen to the Channel 5 news on Jan. 22nd, the legislature is seriously considering putting through a bill for rent control. The next point I wanted to make is this: individual owners of townhomes or homes rent for far less than the apartments. Obviously, one of the reasons is they don't offer swimming pools and a clubhouse and a workout room. I get that. And...but they don't also have the overhead...high overhead fees. They raise their rents...the corporations raise their rents every single year and every single time somebody moves in. One of the apartment comp...they raise their rents depending on the season or the demand. My own son owns two townhomes in Stoker Gardens. One of them's been rented to the same single woman for four and a half years now, ever since it was built, and he has never raised her rent because she's a good tenant. I find that in my business. I also property manage a few homes, and I...the...at townhomes, I mean, for clients of mine, and they keep the rents low if they have a good tenant in there. I wanted to talk about properly locating high...super-high-density housing. I spoke with Stephen Anderson, the West Haven City engineer and planner. West Haven has had 1,252 apartments built in their city over the last several years. All of them are properly buffered and on large main corridors that can handle the increased traffic. The best location for super-high-density housing in Syracuse, if you really want it, would be closer to Interstate 193 where they could handle it, or down by Bluff where the west corridor is going. Those are the only places I know of that can handle such huge increased track...traffic. If you approve this prospective project, and I'm also speaking about 1000 West, the townhomes they want to build on 1000 West, not just the apartment complex, the traffic is going to be a nightmare. UDOT is not planning on widening Antelope.
Kathy, I'll give you 20...20 seconds more.
Okay. The root problem of these proposed building projects is the cost of the land. The builder has...has to build the highest amount of units he can possibly do in order to pay the amount the owner is asking. The fact is, several people over the years have approached the owner of these two parcels to build various projects. And approximately two years ago, a dentist wanted to build a building on the three-acre parcel on 1000 West, but he couldn't make the numbers work, so he bought the land from someone else on Gordon and built his building there.
I'm going to have to ask you to suspend. Thank you.
My name is Judy Wimmer, and I live at Sunset Park Villas, and I have two very, very big concerns. It's my understanding that the...I'm talking about there runs around Sun Park...Sunset Park. Complex on 1,000 and the one on Antelope Live are going to share amenities. I am still concerned about the kids that live between those two amenities because the only way they're going to get between one to the other...there's a driveway at the end of the complex on 1,000. They'll come to that driveway and go down through Smiths and through the liquor store. That is where all of their deliveries to Smiths. And I, in my opinion, that's a tragic accident waiting to happen. And in my wildest dreams, I cannot imagine that you would consider putting apartments on Antelope Drive. I'm begging you, please do not add to the congestion we already have.
Thank you, Judy.
Terry Palmer, Syracuse resident. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Council. I've spoken several times before council, and two years ago, I mean each and every time, I'm against apartment buildings, big apartment buildings. We fought D-Tech, all of those things, you know, trying to keep apartment buildings from coming in here. I'm still against it. I do not like the idea of Antelope Drive being filled full of apartments, but I do like the idea of owner occupied. And you can look at townhouses, you can look at condos and so forth that are, you know, so much better for our community. Two years ago, highest density you could put on an acre was five houses or five units, and this is probably putting this up to 50 or 60 units. Very, very disappointed in this council personally. I think we've destroyed the idea of what Syracuse would be. It's a suburb. It's a place to come out, build a home, and not have to worry about all the traffic because it will get a lot more. So those are my thoughts. Let's build houses and condos and townhomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Palmer.
I'm John Cole, citizen of Syracuse. Come here wearing two hats. First hat, Chief Lending Officer for Weber State Credit Union, and we recently purchased Lot Two of Shadow Point subdivision right to the east of the Holt property. We will be right next to the three-story apartment complex in the pool according to the proposal. And on behalf of the credit union, we are extremely concerned with the visibility of our new location and new branch that would go in there with the...with the height of the new buildings and so close to the road. And also, we don't necessarily desire to be pegged up next to a pool. As a citizen, I...I second those thoughts about homeownership, townhomes, condos. We speak of needing lower-cost housing and homeownership, and rental units are not it. The lowest, to my understanding, the one...one-bedroom apartment starts just over $1,000 per month and goes up from there for the second...for two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and and townhomes that are for rent. I don't...I don't also support partial commercial in the property as well. It doesn't seem to make very much sense for a actual mixed-use in that particular area. I have kids that go to Cook Elementary that cross Antelope to go to school, and that increases traffic there. And so there's definitely a concern of safety and the traffic that would be...come to that area. And...and just I really feel like homeownership really helps people in the long run versus making a developer's pocket rich. So I really recommend small homes and condos.
Thank you, John.
My name is Antoinette Hosford. I live on 1875, and my concern...obviously, the traffic congestion. Getting in and out of our neighborhood is a little difficult already when the kids are crossing the road at Antelope and 1475, and so the congestion down that road is going to be just horrible. It's already backs up when the kids are crossing, you know. It's...the concern is a danger for the kids. The concern also is, we've already had people, a couple of people, that have put their house up for sale because they're so afraid of the congestion. The three-story apartment buildings, I don't...I think it would be unsightly personally. You know, we moved to Syracuse because it was a nice, beautiful town, and if we want to keep it a nice, beautiful town, I think we should be more welcoming and aesthetically nice for people to come and see. Antelope is a main...I don't know that we want to see apartment buildings there along with businesses. I think it lowers property values of the people that are around there. It creates more crime and just more congestion, and it's unsafe for the kids. And I think your biggest...I think you should be concerned for the children and the people that are in Syracuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Antoinette.
I am Joshua Bone, and I'm a high schooler who resides in Syracuse. I love this community, and when I grow up, I would like to stay in this community. But part of that means that I need to have access to affordable housing. The US Census Bureau reported that there was a near 40% increase in Utah housing since 2015. In 2018, the national average of cost of housing was $229,000, and Utah's was over $300,000. This means that the cost of housing in Utah needs to go down if I'm going to reside in Syracuse when I'm older, and I would very much like to. Now, as a part of this, there needs to be more higher-density housing, but there also needs to be more options for me depends of ownership. Apartments are a key to this solution, and this will aid me in being able to reside in Syracuse and stay a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua.
Hello, my name's Dustin Robertson, and I am a Syracuse resident. I am just southeast of the apartment complex or the land that the apartment complex is proposed for. I come to you as a young parent. I've got two little kids. Crossing Antelope as it is right now is really bad, and before long, my kids are going to be walking across that street. And if for some reason, because somebody wants to make a bunch of money, my kid gets hit by a car, that's not going to do well for me. I would appreciate if you would vote against putting in the high-density housing, and I understand what the young gentleman before me was saying. Syracuse is a great place to live, and that's why we bought our house a year ago. Okay, we built there because we liked the neighborhood. We have some great neighbors, one of which is right next to me. It's a great place to live, okay? And I understand apartments are necessary in certain areas, but as many people have spoken before, put it in a place that can support the amount of traffic that's going to come with it. As some people have said, 1,000, that is a very bad area, especially when you're doing commute times. It's a horrible place to try and turn onto 1,000 off of Antelope. I understand that, again, you want to have the housing options available, but if you put those apartments in there, that traffic is not only going to trans Antelope by coming through my neighborhood, a residential street at 25, in which they already go 35 and 40, even though there are stop signs. They're going to use that as a major thoroughfare in order to get to their apartments. You're going to turn my neighborhood into Antelope. That is not okay for me. I appreciate it if you would avoid this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dustin.
Greetings. I'm Sam Peel. I'm a resident of Syracuse. I'm a retired Master Sergeant in the US Air Force. I chose to move to Syracuse when I retired because it was suburban heaven. By putting high-density apartment complexes, all you're doing is ruining property value for everybody here in this room. I urge you to vote no on apartment complexes. Think about your citizens who voted for you and their property value. I urge you to vote no because of traffic and how much it's going to hurt this community. Please, no apartments, townhomes. I understand the young man before us stood here and said he wants to live in Syracuse, and he wants an apartment. That's wonderful. The corridor is a nice option for that. Please, take care of your citizens who voted for you.
Thank you, Sam.
Keith Burgess, 27, 61 South, 3,000 West, Syracuse. Just a little change of direction. I noticed studying the general plan change of 2020 that my lot and the others, we...if you change the PI...PRD requirements for acreage, myself and my neighbors could all apply for PRD, even with the...there's some language there to prevent abuse, but I think that's kind of subjective to interpret that. So I...I'd encourage you not to create yourself a lot of headaches and have some definite level that you can have a PRD, or else everybody would qualify, and then it's up to you to be the bad guys and tell them they can't. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
I guess I'm last.
Are you last?
Yep. One more. My name is...
My name is Vern Modelle. I live at seventeen seventy-eight South, Allison Way. I appreciate the fact that when they widened Antelope Drive, that they named the road after me. There's a big yellow sign there that says dead end. And it's been quite enjoyable to live there. One of my biggest concerns is for, let's see, I built my house in eighty-six, and I was told that the first five hundred feet off of Antelope was going to be reserved for commercial development. I've seen some commercial development, but I often wonder why some of this property hasn't been utilized as it was originally designed to be. We need to have an infrastructure that will support the growth that we're going to have. New fire department people, trucks, police department. There's going to be a lot of, a lot of things that will happen with the development of these apartments. And I have concerns about what may happen in some of those areas. I have watched on the news. I have seen the graffiti that has been put on buildings. Certain groups of individuals have no respect for peoples and their property. I believe that you will see a rising in crime rate based upon some of these units. Not necessarily the occupancies of those units, but the other groups of people that will come into that area trying to profit from the people that live there. I would urge that we stop and reconsider and look at other options that would better utilize that property. I asked Colleen Doll, how come she didn't sell her property behind my house to the liquor store? I personally would have preferred that than a group of apartment buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern.
My name is Alan Clark. My family and I, we moved to Syracuse. There were three thousand people changed in the last thirty years. I remember being on the Planning Commission and the Council when Sunset Villas came through for review and approval. And ironically, there was just as much upheaval about that development as there is about this. What I would like to say is that as a city council, as a mayor, there will be change, and change will come. Regardless of whether these apartment buildings are built on this land, it will not be empty land for much longer. What I would ask is that you use your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, your ears, the things that you have understood and you're trying to accomplish for the city, and make sure that whatever goes on to this property will benefit us, not only today, but five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road. There's so much that can be done, and I'm not saying whether it should go one way or the other. What I'm asking is that as the land is developed, please make sure that you are taking all items into account, not frenzy, not, not those that are volatile, but lead our city and make sure that the decisions that are made are those that are proper and correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
My name is Mike Counselor, citizen of Syracuse, nineteen eleven South, thirteen twenty-five West, just south of the proposed apartments on fourteen seventy-five. We've heard the traffic, and I think that's one of the key issues that I have is when you look at, you know, three hundred-plus apartments going into that particular space and with no outlet off, onto, onto Antelope and being forced on to, to access or leave, leave and enter off of fourteen seventy-five, that is, that is a monumental catastrophe waiting to happen. Fourteen seventy-five is, is already pretty heavily trafficked with the access through the new development onto one-thousand. That's helped relieve some of that congestion, but just not, not a great idea. I stand with a lot of the other suggestions about relocating apartments like that to a corridor that's more applicable and more easily utilized, such as, you know, out, out west. Another thing that concerns me is, and I do stand by the, some of the thoughts about townhomes, and that would be, that would do two things. It would be a little bit more appealing, and I think it would help reduce the congestion. But one of the things I did want to say is if you, if you do want to pursue or if you want to have an idea of what it's going to look like with apartments, go over to that new three-story little apartment right there by, on two-thousand, just across, just to the east of the Wendy's. If you want to put your eyes on something, get a real idea of what it's going to look like. If that's what you want Antelope to look like with apartments against a street three stories tall, it's just, it's an eyesore, and it's not, not the right location. If, I think if we need to grow, that's fine, but let's, let's use your wisdom, use, put some forethought into it and develop apartments in a, in a space that's much, much more applicable and will set the, set the, you know, the, set the right tone for the city and growth and congestion and traffic, and, and look at the second and third and fourth order effects. Because that's really another one of them is, is, you know, you put three hundred apartments in there, can the schools right there handle it? You know, all the, the different schools right there by, on, on two-thousand? So I think, you know, that's just another one of the topics that, you know, needs to be looked into along with the traffic, along with the congestion, and, and some of those second and third order effects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Amy Durens. I live on eighteen forty-nine South, fourteen seventy-five West. This new proposed plan, it will be my backyard. There, I have a lot of concerns. I know that part of the plan is if it is going to be changed to mixed-use, then you have to accept the plan that they are proposing, which there are a lot of things that are not going to work with the rest of the city. A lot of people have mentioned them before. You know, the buffer, the eight-foot buffer or whatever, it's not going to work with the rest, the residential right next to it. There's lots, you know, already getting out of my house in the mornings is already almost backed up to my driveway. I don't, how am I going to get out of my own driveway with eight hundred more people pulling out of that little complex? The other part is my children walking to school. My kids go to Cook Elementary. You know, if this is going to pass, I would highly recommend you possibly putting in a pedestrian crossing. Can the schools even handle that many more children going to their school? My other concern is the commercial space that they are proposing to put in there. There's already a lot of empty commercial space in Syracuse that is not being utilized. So I don't see how they are going to fill those spaces with commercial properties when they can't already fill what's already available. Does it have to be high-density that goes in there? Other people have suggested townhomes, you know, owner properties. There's a better place to put this. What else? Yeah, just there were a lot of concerns about the proposed plan. So I know that if this does get passed tonight, then you are essentially accepting the proposed plan. And there are lots of issues with the proposed plan, namely, the height of the townhome or the apartments, how many dumpsters? We don't want dumpsters in the backyard. The covered garages is going to create a problem because there's going to be that ten-foot alleyway where crime could happen. And then just the buffering between the residential and the apartment complex. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi, my name is Hildy Slocum, thirteen sixty-nine West, two thousand South. I'd like to just confirm all the things that have already been said, that the traffic is ridiculous anyway, and it'll be so much worse, especially with no outlet. The parking that they're talking about, there's no way that it would hold that many cars where they're talking that they have for them. So I can just see the parking all the way down fourteen seventy-five and probably down on one-thousand as well. The traffic is out of control already. The schools are so crowded. Where will you put a new school for all these people's children? I don't even know what they can go. And unfortunately, right where we live, there's not even any bigger space to build another, another school. I agree with the person that said that if you move the apartments in a different area where there's enough space to actually build them and support with schools and other infrastructure, you'll be doing the city a favor, and we'll applaud you. I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hildy.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Mann. I live on thirteen eighty-seven West, two thousand South. I am a mom of four kids. Starting next year, I will have three kids that go to Cook Elementary. So obviously, that is a big concern for me. As others have mentioned, it already is pretty scary for those kids walking to school. And once this, I forget what, where it's being built, but I believe next year, or whenever this new school, I think it's in Leighton, that's being built, Cook Elementary is going to be the most past-capacity school in Davis County. And obviously, this will add to that problem. I know there's another development looking into going that will also be in Cook's boundaries. And I love Cook Elementary. It's an amazing school, and they're doing everything they can with all the students that they have, but I just, I don't see how it's going to work with what as many kids as these new buildings will bring. And I really appreciated what that high school student said. I, I definitely want affordable housing in Utah. I have four kids that I hope will stay close, but this is just not the area for it. There's other options that would be better for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Hello, excuse me. My name is Casey Durens. I live at fourteen seventy-five West, or eighteen forty-nine South, right next to the proposed Holt property. I just wish to echo the same valid concerns that you have all heard this evening and, and from the Planning Commission. There's a lot of concerns that the, the community has regarding this development. I won't bore you with repeating the same thing over and over again. I come to you from a personal, sorry, from a personal spot. I can't speak for everybody, but this affects me and my family extremely personally. And we moved to Syracuse because it was a wonderful community. It is a wonderful community regardless of however this turns out. It'll still be a great community. But we moved here, and when we moved into the house, we knew there was this big giant lot there, and we just assumed it would be housing. We didn't really, we weren't concerned. We were just excited to, to live in the neighborhood. And we never thought we would be able to live in such a wonderful place. And it has been a great place for us. We don't want to move, but we kind of feel like our hand is being forced because we don't want to live next to this development. Not that it's going to be a terrible place right off the bat. It looks beautiful. But us personally, we don't want to live right next to this. And I know a lot of our neighbors feel the same way. That's pretty much all I had to say, but I do want to say that this is a public hearing. And if you have a voice, whether you are for it or against it, if you don't voice your opinion, they do not know. So I strongly urge you, if you have an opinion one way or the other, please get up here so they know what you're thinking. We elected them to work for us, and if you don't tell them what you feel, they're not going to know that. So thank you very much.
My name is Dale Jensen. I live at fourteen thirty-seven South, twelve fifty West, behind Cook Elementary School. I have some concerns with the density of the housing that is being considered at this time. I have heard several arguments, and I'm concerned that at the time that Antelope Drive was designed, along with the other roadways in the area, it was not planned to have this type of density. The planned, the, most likely, it was planned for more single-family housing. Well, I'm, like many, a creature of habit, and I enjoy things that don't change. And I understand that there may be people that are angry that we are looking to have change. There is a housing problem. I don't disagree with that, and I think that Syracuse should be a part of providing housing, not just for those children that we have that are growing up here and enjoy this community, but we also need to provide housing for those that are moving into the area. I think that can be well-served by providing more townhomes. It would still provide that level of dense, a higher density and housing options for people. The developer is incentivized toward high use and that which is providing him the greatest profit. I do not fault him, but is that profit what is right for the community? It is more than just about the developer. It is about us as a community and the type of atmosphere that, and the type of projection that we want to society. The, something that I was not aware of is the housing, the parking issue that will be caused by the complex, not having sufficient parking for each home. This has become a problem down in Salt Lake City, where they have not afforded enough parking for the housing. And it is believed that the UTA will be able to provide that type of travel for those that may have, would not be able to have an additional vehicle. And it's not working. The problem is, is that UTA just has not evolved there yet. Syracuse is not even close. I have these concerns, and I do appreciate your time, council members, mayor.
Thank you, Dale.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Mike McBride. I live down near the Glen Eagle Golf Course, which I developed and own and developed six hundred and seventy homes around the golf course. We started that back in nineteen ninety-five. Prior to that, in the nineteen eighties, I sat on the Planning Commission for eight years here in Syracuse. And I just want to echo what Mr. Clark said, and that is that when I was on the Planning Commission and developers were coming in to start developing and putting homes in, everybody complained that development in general would ruin Syracuse. And in fact, had the Planning Commission and City Council at that time listened to the clamor, most of the people here tonight wouldn't be able to live in Syracuse because it would still be all farms. And so you have to consider both sides. What I've heard tonight primarily is that it needs to be planned well. We're going to eventually, and, and one of the things you have to consider is the landowners' needs and the landowners' desires. And one of the things that you, you can put into the planning is what fits best. I mean, you've been through a general plan discussion, you've gone through studies, all kinds of things to determine how Syracuse should look in fifty, in by twenty fifty. how Syracuse should look in fifty, in by twenty fifty. And this fits in that plan. And so, I would just urge everyone to take a look at what those studies came up with, what the general plan says, and have the City Council and the mayor consider all of those input, all of the input versus just the most noisy input that you hear, you know, when things are being discussed. And I just think that progress is going to happen, and if we plan it well, then we will have the schools. We'll have the transportation hubs. We'll have all of the streets and everything that we need to accommodate those that wanna come to live in Syracuse, as all of those people have been doing for the last thirty or forty years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, I'm Sue Larson. I live at, yeah, I just moved in, so eighteen eighty-six south fourteen eighty-five west. So I'm just, yeah, southeast of it, but, or southwest of it. I have a real big problem with this. I just bought here. I thought I was moving into great community. It says commercial land up there. Nothing was proposed out there to let us know that this was happening. And I bought here. Am I happy? No, I'm not happy at all because for me to sell my home now that I've lived here, that I searched places after places. I came to Syracuse to live because of the community. And I could afford the home here, and now you're putting apartments in front of us, which is gonna cause more cops, crime, fire department, you name it. Then my property taxes are gonna go up, and we're all gonna pay for it. So I have a problem with it. I can't sell my home. If I do, I'm gonna take a twenty thousand loss right off the bat. And then, do I feel right telling somebody, hey, by the way, they're building apartments up front? Do you think they're gonna buy from me if they wanna live in Syracuse and look at skyscrapers? I feel sorry for the ones that are behind us, that have to look at that, that are right there behind it. I look at it through my back door and can look up now, and I'll see the townhomes, but not apartments. And we need to really think about the people here that are living here, that have bought here. We should be a concern. Taxes, everything. You lower amount of our homes, some people might be in their homes where they're maxed out, and they're not gonna get out of them because they can't sell them. That's not a way to trap people into a home by putting these apartments up there. And I thank you for listening to me, other than one other thing, and I did hear concern as that this, we're gonna be a section eight, which is low income. And I hope that's not really happening. It was from somebody that worked with the city, so just wanna let you know that, that I'm very, very, that is gonna bring our homes down to nothing. And that's not fair to your residents here. So please consider us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
My name's John Fisher. I live at seventeen sixty-three Allison Way, just west of the, where the townhomes are gonna be. They'll join my backyard. Now, I moved here thirty years ago, and I'm not original Syracuse resident. I grew up in Clearfield. And I just remember all the farmland out here when I was growing up. But I moved here because of the community out here. The community feel, the closeness, the tightness of the community. And when I built, I built on twenty-one seventy-five, and everything west of me to two, and there in one thou- or two thousand was all fields, and eventually those all got built in. I've watched that block get built in from just having Allison Way there, and then a little bit over by the movie place. That block has gotten built in over the years. I went away, I went to Okinawa, and I came back to Syracuse once again because it was still the family feel, the close community that I had left to go to Okinawa. I don't blame the contractors for wanting to build, but I think the council really needs to take a good look at what's best for the community. Take the community's voice in it, and look at those corridors as far as high density. Put the master plan the way it should be for the benefit of all citizens, not just select few. I know Josh Bowen, he's a fine young man. He's in my neighborhood. I want him to have a place to live, and I think if we plan that community well, he will have affordable housing. I don't see this as a good fit for that area. I'm putting it right next to the single-family homes. I've heard a little bit about townhomes. That's a possibility. Keep the density down a little bit. And I just want you to know that for me personally, I don't think it's a good fit, the way they've got it designed. They've tried to accommodate a lot of things. They've talked about, you know, me personally, about building a concrete fence to try and alleviate some of the concerns I have. But there's still that southern boundary that they're talking about leaving a vinyl fence, and you've all seen it, I have, where these kids will go and bang up against those vinyl fences and just bust through them. That's gonna be a cost to the contractor or to the homeowner to keep those fences repaired. And if they put the ten-foot boundary between the back of those garages and that, that's gonna be an area where that's gonna happen. I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm Talon Millerberg. I live in nineteen eighty-two south Dahl Lane, and these apartments are going in just up the street from me. And I don't feel there's a need to, I feel there's a need that there has to be apartments here in Syracuse, but I don't feel there's a need to be apartments right there. There's too little space, there's not enough parking, and I don't want my neighborhood becoming a giant parking lot. I believe that we should apartment, put apartments somewhere where it's more accommodable, like Highway one ninety-three or out towards the Legacy Corridor. I, I just feel that it's appropriate for them to be out there, just not appropriate for them to be on Antelope Drive. We should use that space for a commercial or residential housing, or even townhomes. I just believe that high-density housing like that does not deserve to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, my name is Paul Watson. I'm a Syracuse resident, and I'm gonna speak primarily about the development by the Liquor Store and Smiths, but I'm sure some of these comments would apply to the development being considered further west. So I think there's a couple of concerns that I'll echo, the, the traffic. The developers have, we've met with the developers. They haven't been able to address the traffic concerns. I live on Bluffridge Drive. The traffic will infiltrate our neighborhood and become a safety concern. The two other things that I'll mention, I think we have to look no further than the, the general plan under housing, and I'll read directly from it. "The city's preference is to remain predominantly bedroom community, maintaining the majority of our housing stock as single-family dwellings. The city acknowledges that as population increases, a broader diversity of housing types will be needed and desired by residents. Basement apartments and backyard cottage apartments, also known as accessory dwelling units, are viewed as a preferred way of providing housing options, while also giving a financial boost to homeowners. Townhomes are another acceptable option, but should be limited to locations along arterial roads and major intersections. Townhomes are generally preferred over apartments. Apartments could be in an appropriate use if allocated adjacent to existing commercial along state highways or near the West Davis Corridor. Attached housing is not wanted unless it, and I think this part is important, is designed well to match the architecture and the building height of surrounding developments. Three-story apartment buildings along Antelope do not accomplish that." The other thing is, and I, and I realize you guys don't go out and seek these things. I realize you're considering something that's been brought to you by a developer and a landowner hoping to, to sell their property. But I think we have to look at the purpose of the multi-use zone. "To create a zone which will provide traditional neighborhoods where residents can work, play, shop, and live that are strategically designed to create a symbiotic relationship by allowing for a combination of commercial and residential uses. These neighborhoods are meant to boost the city's daytime population, which is anticipated to support local business and increase sales tax revenue. This zone will be the most urban atmosphere within the city. Projects within the zone are anticipated to provide context-sensitive architecture, art, entertainment, convenience, alternative housing types, affordability, and active lifestyles through recreation amenities onsite and improved sidewalk connections to destinations offsite. Residential uses may be applied to existing commercial areas or commercial uses inserted into existing residential areas if the goal is to increase jobs and, and/or increase sales tax, and the development scale is compatible with its surrounding, with its surroundings." These particular type of apartments that are being built, they don't offer any of this. They're, they're high-density, multifamily housing with a sprinkling of commercial to try and fit into them, you know, into a multi-use zone. I think if we look at places where this would be effective, would be hubs that can support that, near the West Corridor. If you look to Clearfield, that is, that is building these types of things along the state highway, they're around...
Paul, I'll give you twenty minutes, twenty seconds.
Excellent, twenty minutes. Here we go, no.
Boy, if I can make time, I'm gonna do it.
They're anchored around track stations and things like that where people can actually do this. This doesn't excite me. It doesn't seem like it's, it's going to include me in any of these, you know, in bringing the community together. So, thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for your courtesy.
Evening, gentlemen. My name is Melvin Glenn. I live on twenty-one eleven south fifteen seventy-five west. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-seven. I'm retired Master Sergeant from the United States Air Force. I decided to live here in Syracuse and Utah for multiple reasons. One, the community was a great place. We raised three children here. I've seen Syracuse make a few mistakes. Second council meeting I've been to, stood up and talked at both of them. One was when Gold's Gym, we were talking about building a complex down in Antelope to have a gym, and the town didn't want it. They listened to, the council members listened to the town. We didn't build it. Gold's Gym shortly moved in. Gold's Gym sold out. Now there's a new gym building on there. The accents the one gentleman talked about is true. My wife was hit by a car on Antelope, and that intersection is bad. I don't even go out that way. I go down a back road and hit two thousand. I come home the same way. I think there's a hidden agenda behind the apartments, and that's the taxes. Syracuse is losing R.C. Willys, and I think you guys need to mix places up on taxes. You build fifty units there versus ten or fifteen townhomes, more taxes. This would put the icing on the cake for me. I retire from Hill Air Force Base in three years, and this is California east. Most of these people in the audience will not be able to afford their taxes here in Utah, if Utah keeps going the same direction it's going right now. Bottom line. My taxes here in Utah, in Syracuse, since I built my house in ninety-seven, have increased almost double. And it's gonna go up. Y'all know it's gonna go up. What is there to do in Syracuse? We have a few Chinese places you can sit down and eat, more fast food joints than you can shake a stick at. Place was supposed to move in over there by the gym, and they didn't. Costco, Home Depot, and we lost out. So now we're gonna throw some apartments up there and collect some taxes from these fifty units, so...
Mel, I'll have to limit you to twenty seconds.
No, you're fine, sir. I'm done. I think I've made my point.
Thank you, Mel.
Hi, I'm Tony Brown. I live at eighteen ninety-three south twelve thirty west. This affects me in a way like it affects everybody, and I think we're all concerned about can our infrastructure handle all of this. My child also walks to Cook Elementary, and that's a concern, him being able to get there safely every day. And I also get to view this from my front porch instead of the nice open space that the, that's currently there. But I just wanna ask all of you guys to look at this, look at all of the options that are available, and come to a conclusion whether or not this is good for our community. You can see what everyone thinks about it, and just take it all the heart and make the right decision. Thanks.
Thank you, Tony.
You know, it's a tough one because, you know, we...
Could you state your name and place of...
Sorry, I'm Katie Bush, and I live at ten eighty-one Coventry Circle here in Syracuse. I've been here probably about twelve years, and been in Davis County my whole life, different cities, but always in Davis County. And, you know, because of our strong economy here in Utah, it's attracting a lot of people. And I think if we all, you know, I, I understand, you know, everyone's point of view and not wanting to bring something that, you know, you're not the only city. It's most of the cities in Davis County that are feeling this way, that they don't wanna bring the high-density housing in. But I think we all need to ask the question to ourselves, you know, do we have friends and family in other states that are moving here? Do we have kids? You know, if those things are true, we're contributing to the problem. And so, I think that if we can just keep a little bit of an open mind of what's going on, prices, things are gonna stay stable, at least for the next year. Prices are still gonna continue to go up just a little bit. They're thinking four to seven percent. I think we need to think about being able to house our police officers, our teachers, our kids. I think a lot of times we don't, and I think that the City Council does not wanna put in a sky, a, you know, high-rise. I mean, I don't think that's anybody's purpose. I think everybody's purpose is that, you know, if we don't decide how we use our land, I mean, there's, we have twenty thousand acres left in Davis County. That's the reality of the situation. And if we're not careful about how we decide how to use our land, we will be told how to use our land. So, like I said, I think the more important question is, how can we do it the most efficient way? Like, you know, the gentleman before me talked about putting it along, you know, the corridor, closer to highway access around our businesses. Because I think what all of us want is to, you know, be able to have a Syracuse that can compete with, you know, we've watched the cities around us grow up and, and like thrive, and our little city is not thriving. And so maybe it's about trying to determine how to best utilize the land, and so that we don't put, you know, something that we shouldn't somewhere. But the fact of the matter is, is we need more higher-density housing in all of Davis County, not just Syracuse. It's, we, we need to be really thoughtful and thought about how we're planning our, our rest of our use of our land. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else wanna hold the ice cube?
My name's Ryan Christensen. I live at nineteen eleven Allison Way. I put notes in my phone, and now I forgot to pull it out. My biggest concern is what everybody else's biggest concerns are. You know, I know the young gentleman in the high school, in high school said that he wanted affordable housing. And at the Planning Commission meeting, the builder said that these apartments, the one-bedroom apartments, are gonna be like twelve hundred dollars. To me, that's not affordable housing. You know, twelve hundred dollars can get a home bigger, much, a home for twelve hundred dollars a month, much bigger than a one-bedroom apartment. So affordable housing, I don't feel like that is truly affordable housing. And also my concern, you know, I love Syracuse. I've lived here for almost five years now. Driving down Antelope Drive, you see the little sign that says Syracuse, and right next to it, if this plan goes through, to me, we should have the builder build us a sign that says, "Home of the three-story apartment buildings." You know, that we're gonna have these big monstrosities right off Antelope Drive. It's gonna, to me, it's gonna be an eyesore. I do think we need more apartments, but, you know, they're, they're inevitable. It's gonna come here. But in this small space, really the space is there, is much too small for this amount of apartments will be built. And then I know one of the things, the, when I was here at the Planning Commission meeting, the builder said that, you know, having retail space there is gonna be much more traffic. To me, that argument, I understand that argument, but retail traffic is a twenty-four, you know, all, all-day thing. Having apartments, when we go to work... Um, having apartments, um, when we go to work, you know, most of us in this community have to work, and we, from seven to nine in the morning, traffic is crazy getting out of that area already. Um, adding more apartments is gonna make it worse. Retail space, uh, is not gonna make it worse. At that time of morning, you're not gonna have that much traffic. And then coming back home in five, six in the evening, it's gonna be the same thing. Coming home, the traffic's gonna be horrible, getting in and out of there, having that many more people. Um, those were my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
This is cool. Uh, my name's Michael Price, I live on nineteen fifty South, um, just a little bit south of the proposed projects. My questions on the whole thing and my thought process on the whole thing is more infrastructure. When the Tavoli Way project went in, water pressure went down in both potable and non-potable. The traffic-wise, are the roads gonna get bigger? Where is it, how are you going to expand Antelope to be able to fit that? Uh, are you gonna be able to put in walkways across, maybe elevated walkways for the school kids that need to go to Cook? Um, and then also the mixed, uh, the whole thing about mixed, um, use, bringing in business. We wanna bring in business. Why have businesses not come already? Was Syracuse offering businesses? Why is R.C. Willie leaving? Why did Home Depot, why did Costco not come here? So, that's the ball part of the planning that I don't think has really happened all that well to, to make Syracuse a well-planned city to expand. Where is the infrastructure coming from? Where is the planning coming from? What are the plans to be able to provide water for all the, the different people that are coming in? Where are the plans to provide the traffic and the thoroughfares to be able to not have traffic jams? I came, uh, I lived in, lived in Davis County my entire life. I moved, lived in Bountiful and I came north because of traffic. There's no way that I will ever move to southern, or to the South Valley of Salt Lake because of the traffic that they have there. How congested everything is. So, what's the plan to be able to counteract all that? I just feel that the plan hasn't been set, uh, everybody's talked about the traffic and the cars and I just don't think that it's been planned out as well to be able to get the city to the state where everybody wants it to be, where it attracts businesses. Where, uh, look at all the, where the gym was, or is, I guess. There's businesses there, how much business do they get? How much parking is there and how many cars do you normally sit there on a daily basis? How many places are vacant right now because nothing is, it doesn't seem like it's planned, and so that's my comments.
Thank you, Riker.
All right, Trent Barney, Syracuse resident. Um, honestly, I'm here for something totally different. Um, and, and, uh, this doesn't affect me or my family in any way, but, uh, just sitting here listening to the comments, um, you know, and I've heard the young men get up about coming back and living here in Syracuse, awesome idea. Um, I bought our first home, was here in Syracuse outside of college, graduated, got done playing ball, my first home was here. We had the option to live in an apartment, but if I would've done that, I wouldn't be in the situation I am in today to be able to sell my home and hopefully build, uh, our future home. So, I mean, the argument of affordable housing, of a twelve hundred dollar rent payment for an apartment just sounds atrocious and hard to bear. But, uh, we moved here because we loved the small-town feel. My wife's from Richfield, um, and, uh, she wanted, I'm a city boy, I grew up in Orem, but she wanted a small-town feel, so we came to Syracuse. Um, in our first year in Syracuse, we saw some dude on a horse at the Iceberg Drive-Thru, and I said, "See, babe, it's small-town." Like, we got a dude on a horse ordering a hamburger. So, uh, it was awesome, like, we love it here. But again, like, this plan, it just sounds like hearing from the citizens that it needs to be in a different location, that the spot, um, you know, I don't, I'm not affected by the traffic. I get to leave after work hours or after busy hours to commute on I- fifteen, that doesn't faze me, I, I get the ability, I work from home. But if that's going by my house, I'm gonna go bonkers, right? There's no flipping way I would allow that and do everything in my power to, to move that into a different location. Um, so there's definitely different options, hopefully we're all considering those, and amen, I guess.
Thank you, Troy.
Evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Scott Gandy and I live on fourteen seventy-five West. Uh, been there a long time, about twelve years, and I've seen since the closure of Allison Way, the exponential increase in traffic on fourteen seventy-five. It's like the Syracuse Five Hundred in front of my house. One thing I would ask is the consideration of the increase in population density there and the associated traffic with that as it is. I'm not sure if any studies have been done of the current traffic situation and the enforcement of the speed limits too there. I would ask that you please consider that before you make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else that we could entertain? Nobody wants to hold the ice cube. All right, thank you. We really appreciate your input, I'll declare now that we are out of, out of public comment. Let me just clarify two or three points. The council, as a courtesy to them, love this time period. They love to hear from you, and I've seen copious sets of notes taken up here. As I look down the dais, I can see them thinking and I can see them understanding you and hearing what you have to say. I do need to correct one item, that this is not a public hearing. This is a courtesy to the council to hear from you and a courtesy back to, to, for you to have a chance to voice. And it has been good, we've spent an hour and twenty minutes, uh, in the economy of our meetings, meeting tonight. Uh, this is probably the most important thing that we've done tonight is to listen to you. But it is not a public hearing, the public hearing was held with the planning commission. And, uh, at that time, you, we, the, the time was given to you to speak just to that topic. You can see we've had several other topics that were not related to this, and we entertain public comment at every one of our meetings. Number two, we will discuss this item tonight, but only briefly. This is the first time that the council has seen this issue. The first time they've had the packet to study, the packet was given to them Thursday night. There will be no decision made tonight, this is a work session. And I can tell from the complexity of this that there's a lot to work through here. In a moment, we will go, return to our agenda, and I will begin asking the council to reveal their concerns with the project, their, where, where they stand at this moment for your ears to hear. But I'm going to call that discussion because of the economy of time and what we have to do. There will be much more discussion on this before a decision will be rendered. That decision will be rendered at a first business meeting of the month, which is the second Tuesday of months. Now, if you ask me to predict when that is, I have no crystal ball. I do have a crystal ice cube, but I don't have a crystal ball. So we'd invite you to watch the agenda for when that appears in a business setting where a vote can be taken. No vote can be taken tonight, I will entertain no motions from the council. So in declaring us out of public hearing, Council, I'd like to return us back to our agenda. I've had a request from Councilman Savage to move item four to the head. Do, is there any objection to that? Then let's, Noah, would you come forward and could you move item four to the head?
Item four?
Which one?
Four.
Is four Briggs or Holt?
It's, it's neither.
Neither.
Actually, the commercial to the location.
Commercial over behind the rush.
Trent Barney.
Yeah.
Barney.
Okay.
And, and this is a courtesy to Jordan.
Okay. Um, good evening, Noah Still, Community Economic Development Director. Let me-
How about that for a curveball?
Yeah, I was not ready for that, let me pull up-
Wait till you see my slider.
So we've received an application from Trent Barney to change the general plan and the zoning for a property just to the west of the, there's an assisted living center on nineteen hundred South. Here we go. Um, the, the general plan is currently closed. So the first step, um, during a closed, uh, general plan is to petition the city council to open the, open the general plan out of the open amendment period. So, should you decide that, uh, it meets the qualifications, which, um, in, in the ordinance is, it's listed here. For general plan map amendments, uh, you have to have significant change to arterial or infrastructure by agency other than the city, which were contrary to the assumption of the current general plan. B catastrophic events such as natural disaster. C the city council finds that the proposed development has the potential to confer a substantial benefit on the city committed to the community economic development prior to two sev- two thousand sixteen, which it was not. So what we're after here is direction on if you're interested in opening the general plan out of the open amendment period. If yes, then it would, the planning commission for further consideration.
Jordan, do you wanna begin this discussion? And let's, Council, let's try to limit our comments so that we can move on in the economy of time.
Sure, I, I know that this particular person, they're trying to get this on for a while now. Um, this is, is not a business trying to relocate into our city or anything like that, this is just a resident trying to, he's found a, a location where he would like to put a house, but it's currently not, does not, it's not zoned that way currently. I, looking at it, I don't think the zoning fits what we currently have it zoned as. And so in talking with him, I told him that I would love to, to at least get your opinion on this. I, I know we are out of sight of an open period, but this is one where, um, it's a little bit interesting in that it's just a resident trying to build a home. And I, that's about all I can say, I don't know if we wanna have the, do you have any more to add or if Trent wants to add anything to that?
Uh, no, everything's been in the packet, the maps, um, I think the analysis from staff, I, if I were to look back, I think the reason why it's general plan commercial is because of its proximity to the town center. And I know he wants to just buy the property and split in two, and so you'd end up with two homes on probably about a half acre. So your decision is whether or not, you know, that's, that's congruent. There might be some opportunity cost, but usually, this, this is considered a down zone, so usually down zones aren't too controversial because they're less intense versus having a, you know, another assisted living in somebody else's backyard. But, um, yeah, he's, I'm sure he's, he'd be willing to-
So, so the question before us, Council, would you like to send this on to the planning commission?
I, I personally would, would love to forward it on to the planning commission for their consideration at least, um, being that it's such a low-risk issue.
Lisa, do you?
Sorry, I forgot. Yes, I don't think that there, that there's a reason to impede this, I think that there's, shouldn't be anything controversial getting a couple of half-acre homes. So, even though I look at what requirements are for opening the general map, um, I think this is a-